Thank you. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Mesa City Council meeting for February the 10th. Councilmember Luna is absent and excused from this meeting. We are going to begin the meeting with an invocation that will be offered by Reverend Derek Elliott with the Desert Heritage Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Freeman. So I invite you to please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me in your tradition as I pray in mine? Loving God, who is called by many name, thank you on the behalf of all who gathered here today. Thank you for your diverse and abundant blessings. I call upon you this evening to be with us and provide us wisdom this evening. Let this council be reminded by divine wisdom of those of the past. As it was said, "For I was hungry and you gave me something to eat. I was thirsty and you gave me something to drink. I was a stranger and you invited me in. I needed clothes and you clothed me. I was sick and you looked after me. I was in prison and you came to visit me." Oh God, we know that not all have a seat at the table, but we trust that those who listen, we hear and speak for them. Enable them to have keen sense of justice and what is right. Give them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest discourse. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Mesa. I pray these things in the name that we all call holy. Amen.
Amen.
Please show me the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. The first item on our agenda for today is a couple of different proclamations. We're going to begin with the proclamation honoring the League of Women's Voters, and I'd like to invite Councilmember Duff to make some comments on this.
Yes, thank you Mayor. The Arizona League of Women Voters is recognizing February 14th as the 100th anniversary of the women's right to vote. And I wanted to bring to our attention that I find it quite interesting that also, you know, Arizona became a state on February 14th in 1912. And that same year, our first year as a state, the Women's Suffrage of Arizona petitioned and put on the November ballot, regardless of sex, a citizen has the right to vote and hold office. It was passed at a margin of two to one, and the governor signed it in the proclamation on December 5th in 1912. Although this was significant for women to vote, it wasn't for all women. It was basically for white women. So I want to acknowledge that it was a longer road for women of color, approximately 40 more years before they were given the same privilege. And so, thank you for all the women out there and everything that you do to exercise your voice and make the world better.
Thank you Jen. Here to, from the League of Women Voters, we have a couple of representatives. Would invite you to come forward. Thank you. I think we have Liz Thelton and Penny Sharon, and anyone else that you may have brought with you. We'd invite you to share a few words with us, and then we'll come down and take a photo with the proclamation.
Jen said it really well, that this is a historic moment. We don't get 100 years every, you know, only every 100 years. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, I'd invite you to join me for a photo. Congratulations. I should have worn my white suit, I'm sorry.
You just didn't get the memo, "Wear white for women." The suffrage is more white.
We're all going to smile at these cameras. February is a very eventful month, a very, a lot of profound causes that we're honoring today. The next is Black History Month. So, this month encourages people to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. I'm pleased tonight that we have some of the great leaders of our African-American community here to accept this proclamation. I'd like to invite forward the President of the East Valley NAACP, Roy Tatum, the, from the Central Arizona, President of the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, our city employee Travis Cutwright, also Ron Williams, the Chair of the Mesa Human Relations Advisory Board, and I don't, I haven't seen Reverend Kirby here. Reverend, is that a Kirby present?
I don't see that.
Okay. Well, thank you. Gentlemen, it'd be appropriate if you'd like to share a comment with us, and then we'd be happy to come down and take a photo with the proclamation. Roy, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Counsel. It's good to be recognized when we're not protesting in Mesa. But that as well, I mean, black history is American history, and is rooted in struggling and striving for the promise of America and the Constitution and what our rights are. And I'm proud to say that we get to display those in our, in the valley, in Mesa, and we've had wonderful conversations, tough conversations, and built great relationships to where we can grow, learn, and I want to encourage everyone here to make sure that you have conversations with your children in regards to the contributions of African-Americans in our society. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
Thank you Mayor. On behalf, he's looking at my notes, this is, on behalf of the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, our board, our members is present, and our great friends of NFBPAC, we've got our representation from our Police Department, Fire Department, the chiefs from both organizations, have been great friends of the organization and supporters of that, and I wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you for this proclamation. Thanks to the Mayor and Counsel, one, for understanding the importance of remembering history, right? Because we can't move forward in a manner that's productive without understanding where we came from and the recognition of the people that dedicated their lives for making our lives better, and the ones that gave their lives before us. I was speaking with my, with my wife over the weekend and just reflecting, and my grandfather was born in 1909. And so his father was born in 1864, one year after slavery was abolished, and his grandfather was a slave. That's not that long ago. And so, because of the vision of the Mayor and Counsel and the City Manager, the Assistant City Managers and Deputy City Managers, we're able to continue to make strides. And that's why this day is so important for us, is just this understanding that this is not a race that's won by a sprint, it's not even won by a marathon, this is a journey that we're on. And as Dr. Martin Luther King said, "One day we will overcome." And so, so thank you all. We're honored. And because of the support, I also wanted to acknowledge that the city of Mesa is one of only two cities in Arizona that's a gold association member of NFBPAC. And also because of the support, the Central Arizona chapter is the largest chapter in the country. So thank you.
Thank you Trevor.
Good evening Mayor and City Council. I didn't know how to get an opportunity to speak, but let me just say thank you again for the honor of allowing me to serve as the Chair of the Mesa Human Relations Advisory Board. As we continue to have, create communities for inclusion and equity and respect, I do want to acknowledge our staff members that, from the Office of Diversity, that support us every month, Cisco and Andrea. And again, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for allowing me to be here for this great proclamation reading. Thank you.
Thank you Ron. Counsel, you want to join me for this photo? Well, thank you. We appreciate everyone's attention and respect. Those were two very significant proclamations. Next on our agenda is taking action on the consent agenda. We'd invite Kevin Christopher to come forward to read the consent agenda.
Good evening Mayor and Councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a Council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Ultimate Imaginations, one day event, March 14th, on McDonald from Main Street, First Street, and on Pepper Place from Center Street to Robeson. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Ultimate Imaginations, one day event, February 22nd, on McDonald and Main Street, First Street, and on Pepper Place from Center Street to Robeson. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for St. Bridget Roman Catholic Parish, one day event, February 22nd, 2213 North Lindsay Road. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for Asian Chamber of Commerce, one day event, February 29th, 1920, West Broadway Road. Item 3E, act on liquor license application for Easy Spirits LLC, 35 North Alma School Road. Item 3F, act on liquor license application for Family Dollar, 865 South Dobson Road. Item 3G, act on liquor license application for Go Puff, 225 South Hibbert. Item 3H, act on liquor license application for Go Puff, 7427 East Hampton Avenue. Item 3I, act on liquor license application for Pollos La Chuya, 2706 East University Drive. Item 3J, act on liquor license application for Stratum, 1455 South Stapley Drive. Item 3K, act on liquor license application for Taste of Peru, 1245 West Guadalupe Road. Item 4A, act on bingo application for Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 8, 2024 East University Drive. Item 5A, act on one-year term contract with four years of renewal options for locks, door hardware, and other related parts for citywide departments as requested by the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 5B, act on contract to purchase four emergency response vehicles and one medical response vehicle for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 5C, act on contract to purchase replacement airlifting bags and control kits for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 5D, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for compound cold water meters and related parts and services for the Water Resources Department. Item 5E, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option of the term contract for Class 800 commercial gas meters for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 6A, act on resolution approving and authorizing the City Manager to enter into an airport development reimbursable grant agreement with the ADOT Multimodal Planning Division Aeronautics Group for rehabilitation of the Higly Ramp East at Falcon Field Airport. ADOT will pay most of the cost, the remainder is the responsibility of the city, and is funded by the Falcon Field Airport Enterprise Fund. Item 6B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the City Manager to enter into a communications license with Crown Castle Fiber LLC to allow them to contract and maintain a communications network in the public rights of way. Item 7A, introduction of ordinance regarding ANX-18-00788, annexing property located south of Elliot Road and west of Ellsworth Road and adopting comparable zoning for approximately 319 acres. This was initiated by the applicant. Item 7B, introduction of ordinance annexing ANX, or regarding ANX-19-00420, annexing property located south of Elliot Road and west of Ellsworth Road and adopting comparable zoning for approximately 659 acres. This was initiated by the applicant. Items 7C and 7D are introduction of rezoning ordinances for the Haas Crossing Development that has been discussed by Council in prior study sessions. Specifically, item 7C is the introduction of ordinance ZON-17-00606 for approximately 540 acres located in the Interloop District. This is a rezone with planned area development overlay. This request will establish the Haas Crossing planned area development. Item 7D is the introduction of ordinance ZON-17-00607 for approximately 595 acres located in the Interloop District and for property east of Loop 202. This is also a rezone of the planned area development overlay to establish the Haas Crossing planned area development. Item 8A, introduction of ordinance submitting Title 1, Chapter 31 of the Mesa City Code, and titled City Auditor by adding language related to an annual audit plan, auditing standards, and a public records exemption for auditor working papers and files. Item 8B, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON-19-00834, 1102 East University Drive, located west of Stapley Drive and the north side of University Drive. Rezone to allow for the expansion of existing personal services, hair salons, within an existing building. Item 9A, act on resolution declaring proposed terms, rates, fees, charges for water utility services to be a public record. Item 9B, introduction of ordinance modifying terms, rates, fees, charges for non-residential water utility services. And item 10A, act on ordinance admitting Title 11, the zoning ordinance of the Mesa City Code, by adding Chapter 15, Leisure and Recreation Zone District to Article 2, Base Zone, and by adding the Leisure and Recreation Base Zone to Chapter 3, Designation of Zoning Districts, zoning map, and boundaries to Article 1, introductory provisions. Mayor and Councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mickelson, I have blue cards speaking on Agenda Items 5B and 9B on the consent agenda. Have you received any other cards?
No.
Okay, so Counsel, we will proceed then with the consent agenda, but Items 5B and 9B are removed from the consent agenda. We have a motion made by Vice Mayor Freeman, seconded by Mr. Heredia. Please cast your vote. The vote is unanimous with Councilmember Luna absent. The next item on our agenda then would be Agenda Item 5B. We have a request to speak on that item, and I'd invite forward Carrie Davis. Welcome Mr. Davis. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening Honorable Mayor, City Council. I'd like to express my support for Item 5B, the purchase of the four emergency medical vehicles. I'd also like to ask the question, how will the emergency response vehicles be staffed? Will they be staffed from existing personnel or new hires? Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Davis. Chief, do you want to respond to that?
Thank you Mayor and Counsel. So the new vehicles that we're buying, they will be staffed with new personnel as well. So we're hiring personnel to staff these vehicles. That'll give us a total of six that we're going to have in operation.
Okay. Maybe you could describe what the nature of these vehicles are in comparison to the run-of-the-mill fire truck?
Sure. So these vehicles are allowed to transport patients to the hospital, and we will get reimbursed as we transport patients to the hospital. In our current contract, we are able to transport low-acuity type of calls, and so these vehicles will be doing just that. They'll be transporting patients to emergency rooms.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask a quick?
Yes, of course.
Chief, so the number of staffing for each vehicle is two?
Two.
Two personnel?
Mayor, Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Freeman, yes, that's two personnel. There's one EMT and one paramedic that are on each one of these vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions Counsel? Okay, is there a motion to proceed forward? Thank you, Mr. Freeman's made a motion, seconded by Mr. Heredia. Please cast your votes. Thank you. Passage unanimously with Mr. Luna excused and absent. The next item on our agenda is Item 9B. Just to refresh our recollection, this is introducing an ordinance and setting February the 24th as the date for the public hearing. This is an ordinance modifying terms, rates, fees, charges for non-residential water utility services. We do have a request to speak from Burl Farnsworth. Mr. Farnsworth, welcome. You have three minutes.
And hopefully I've got my information correct. If I haven't, go ahead and correct me. But, as you know, water is the most vital element that we as humans need to have. And what I'm fearing is that the water issue here in Mesa is going to turn into a water war. These that you propose to raise these rates on are our neighbors, even though they're not residents. They have no vote. They have a Mesa address. The question is, have you driven through some of these non-residential areas, and have you seen with your own eyes that most of them are some of the poorer districts that we have in the city area? That even within the midst of those, that there are the balance that are on fixed income? To raise their rates to receive the revenues that you're looking for to operate, I think is the wrong direction to go. I think money misspent on projects that the voters turned down, as you know, a couple of years ago, is impacting the need for your water rate increases. You know, you have an obligation constitutionally for safety first, then the infrastructure and the amenities that a city might need. If you would follow the Constitution and operate under a constitutional budget and fund public safety first, you would never have to use public safety ever again as the crutch for which you strive to raise rates and look for additional revenues across the board. It would never, ever be a concern to the citizens or to the council ever again. I just hope that you will not go forward with these rate increases. Those are definitely our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Farnsworth. Mr. Brady, could you perhaps enlighten us?
Yeah, I'm counsel. I think there may be some confusion about the term non-residential. Non-residential.
Oh, there you go. Sorry. So there may be some confusion about the term non-residential. That doesn't necessarily mean a non-Mesa, someone who is a Mesa resident. This is, another word we could use is "commercial." This is intended rates for commercial users. They're much higher volume users, sometimes they have larger meters, and it's been a longer time that we've been, than that we've been able to, we've adjusted the rates for the commercials. So actually, we're trying to make sure our commercial users are paying their fair share, that they're not behind what our residents, our residential customers are paying. So this has nothing to do with, I guess I got the impression maybe County Island-type individuals. This has nothing to do with this. This is the large commercial users. We're just updating their fees to make sure that the residents are not subsidizing the delivery of water services to these large commercial users.
Okay. Sure. Go ahead.
What is often lost in this explanation is that every time you raise the rates for any user, commercial in the city, is those costs are passed on to the residents. That is a tax increase, and the water increase to the residents of Mesa. So I would not agree with the purpose.
All right. Thank you Mr. Farnsworth. I know this was actually on our agenda a couple of weeks ago, and at that time I explained that we, as a council, had made the decision not to proceed with any residential utility rate increases. And so, I asked that this be reset on the agenda, taking out residential water rate adjustments. So, this is actually, Mr. Farnsworth, speaking to your concern, specifically, Council instructing staff that we are not in favor of proceeding with any residential utility rate increases. We have in the past kind of rehearsed this Mesa history moment where we talk about in 1945, the City Council abolished the primary property tax and instead purchased all of the utilities services, and said that going forward, the city of Mesa is going to finance city services with utility revenue. And that is unusual. That Mesa's the largest city in the country that lacks a primary property tax and relies on utility revenue to pay for things like police and fire services. But that remains the formula that we follow as a community. So what that means is that we do have to accept the social responsibility as we provide residential utility services to our customers, to be as frugal and prudent as we can on residential rates. But at the same time, we have an obligation to use revenue that we generate in the commercial context to funnel back into the city so that we can, in the absence of a primary property tax, have the funds we need to provide essential services like public safety. So I think in that context, maybe this, what we're doing here is perhaps a little easier to understand. But thank you for coming and sharing your comments. Any other comments?
I do, Mayor. Mr. Brady, in our last study session, we discussed that we have not raised non-residential rates for quite some time, and we're doing adjustment to those tiers.
Yeah, there's a portion here that's a very large end users, and it has a special rate for the larger end users, and we had not adjusted that, I think almost since the time we established it. So this was just, we were trying to adjust this so that it stayed consistent. If we don't make the adjustment, it means we'll be paying less of the cost of liver services than what a residential customer is doing. We're trying to create some balance here in parity so that everybody's paying kind of, we're trying to calculate their demand on our services. So yes, this is adjustment to high-end commercial users.
Thank you.
So I would argue that this then is really taking pressure off of our residential rate payers by more equitably spreading the cost of utilities with our commercial users. So I'll be voting in favor of the motion. Counsel, any other comments or questions for staff?
Question. On the, when we talk about large commercial water users, does like a HOA fall into that category? Like, you know, like if you have a green belt on your HOA, would that be categorized as a large commercial user?
So if it's a commercial meter for non-residential, yeah, for non-residential purposes, they would, it might be impacted.
I got you.
But it's, again, it's a distinction, it's not a residential meter. So it's a very different animal.
Yeah, I think the question is, if we aren't, I guess my initial interpretation of this was commercial customers, meaning large commercial organizations. But I mean, if we're effectively raising the water rates on HOAs and people that water, and the residents have to pay their HOA bills, I mean, it might be proxied through the HOA, but nonetheless, that water rate increase is still trickling down to the residential user, right? I mean...
Just means they would be paying less of a portion of the total cost than the residents would be. We're trying to keep this proportionally balanced. So yeah, we could have the, non-commercials could subsidize the residential if that's the, if that's the policy of the council. We didn't think that's what the council wanted to do.
And I'm sorry, just to be clear, what we're doing today is just introducing the ordinance. There'll be a public hearing and another opportunity to comment on this at the February 24th meeting. But per our charter, we introduce an ordinance and put it out there for public comment, and then we'll come back two weeks from now, on the 24th, to have a vote on the merits of this proposal. So this is just whether or not it continues through the process. Any other comments or questions Counsel? All right, Mr. Freeman's made a motion. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you Mr. Heredia. Please cast your vote. The vote passes five yeses, with Mr. Whitaker voting no, and Mr. Luna absent. The next item on our agenda is items from citizens present. That's Item 11. We do have one request to speak, Mr. Burl Farnsworth. Welcome Mr. Farnsworth. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My comments are directed towards the proposal that you made in the State of the City remarks about tuition for young people here in Mesa. I'm an avid supporter of higher education. My children have all pursued that, and they are anxiously engaged in that profession of their choice. But I think that as an... My comments are directed towards the proposal that you made in the State of the City remarks about tuition for young people here in Mesa. I'm an avid supporter of higher education. My children have all pursued that and they are anxiously engaged in that profession of their choice. But I think that as an elected body, you need to understand that there are constitutional provisions that restrict and that guides the direction of your spending or the things that you're able to do. To promote or to give, at least to promote is one thing you can do, but to give of the public treasury unequally to a designated group or any individual is not a constitutional act. Now, there is a way that you can resolve this and it can become constitutional. The Ninth and Tenth Amendments allow all powers not designated, delegated to the governments exist within the states and within the people. So a proposal like this can be constitutional if you will send it to a vote to the people. The people can decide to spend their money in any way that they choose, but you as the elected officials, under that oath of the Constitution, you're not granted that right. This is what allows a community to reside in harmony and peace, knowing that everybody's rights continually, from day to day and year to year, are equally respected and from one administration to another are equally protected. So I'm asking you to promote this, yes. Do what you said you could do, Mayor and Counsel, and ask the community to throw their weight into this project. I would be a full supporter of that. But I'm not a full supporter, not a supporter at all, for you to take away from the people their right to make this choice and you decide to spend your, spend money from the public treasury where you have not been authorized. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Farnsworth. That concludes our business for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.